The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Mister President? Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Cone. Twenty-one present.
A quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by Doctor Reverend Doris Graham. She's the Chaplain for the Delta St. Louis Alumni Chapter and also...
Are you the Chief Pastor at Lane Tavern?
Prayer Tavernist.
She's also Associate Minister of Prayer Tavernacle, misnamed Baptist Church.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Father God, we bless your name and give you glory on this morning. We thank you, oh God, for the opportunity to gather here at the St. Louis Board of Aldermen meeting, oh God, where the elected officials are doing their best to lead the city of St. Louis. Oh God, why don't you continue to bless them, bless their efforts, oh God. Bless their minds, oh God. Bless their energies, oh God. And bless the President of this great Board, oh God. Lead him, guide him, oh God. Hold him up on every leaning side, oh God. And we ask that you bless the St. Louis Alumni Chapter and the Metropolitan Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, members who are here today to take part in this deliberation, oh God. Oh God, we ask for your mercy and your grace, but most of all, you have given us your love. And we thank you right now, oh God. And everything that is done today, let it be done decently and in order. And we just thank you for the victory. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God.
Let's give Doctor Graham a big round of applause. Thank you for opening us up in prayer. We spin our regular order of business, take about Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Alderman from the 10th. Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on the motion for our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar?
I make a motion that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the 10th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th. All the women's from the 27th and the 26th, you would like to approach the dais? I don't know if you're bringing anyone else with you. It's a great day. Why? Because it's Delta Day and City Hall today. Let's give a big round of applause. Thanks to the Deltas for being here.
Mister President, members of the Board, this is an unexpected perk of winning my race, that I get to stand up here and share Delta Day with what I always say is my very own personal Delta dear, my mother, Rochelle Clark. And I mean, on Mother's Day Eve-Eve, to also be able to share this experience with Alderwoman Boyd from the 27th Ward, who is also up here with her daughter, where you asked to? Toni. You know, it's just, it's kind of an overwhelming feeling. This is a good thing. Deltas are amazing. Now disclaimer, I'm not a Delta. But I come and participate probably in more Delta things than some real Deltas. And I, I'm just being honest. We gotta be honest, y'all. We gotta be honest. And because they're honest. They're an honest organization. So when you talk about mothers, they are the example of mothers in the community. Soror DeJeanette, President of the St. Louis Alumni Chapter, is a mother to not only my daughter, but countless children at Carlane Middle School. And then the other ladies, I look around, I mean, I count them as sisters, mothers. I see them. I see them in the community. I see the work they do. So I don't really have to even read this resolution because I know the work that they do and what they stand for. And like an aunt, you know, kind of in our community, when you have an older cousin, you call him my aunt. My Aunt Joyce down here, Joyce Kirk, a proud neighbor in the first ward. I've watched her all my life. And who knew that, you know, I would have this opportunity to honor her? And the rest, you guys, I thank you all for letting me come up and share this honor with you. Do you want to read a little bit of the resolution?
I really did. I'll say something.
Okay, well... Well, we'll just read a little bit that founded in 1913. That right there speaks to, founded in 1913 and still standing and still speaking to the legacy. Continues to lift their collective voices on issues at local, state, and federal levels and impact their 1,000 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States, Japan, Tokyo, and Okinawa, Germany, the Virgin Islands, Bermuda, the Bahamas, Jamaica, and the Republic of Korea. These, all these things, that's a reach. That's an unmeasurable reach. We, they, I don't want them to be too humble. We have, where's my sister Amber? Oh, former State Representative Amber was here. So, I mean, this, every one of these ladies are just amazing. When I go to the events, I look to them, I smile, I speak. They kind of know who I am, but they don't know I'm watching them. And the biggest thing is the example that you all are setting for my little girls. So I thank you personally. I thank you not just on the behalf of the 26th Ward and the Board of Aldermen, but I thank you all for all you all are doing in the community and continue to do in the community. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to cry because you all know how I am. But all I can say is the tears. And so I've watched the Deltas and the Alumni and seen the work that they have done. And it's rare when you have sorority that actually lives by what they were created on. And so I think that's the most powerful things that these ladies can ever do. They're real humble and quiet and so they don't make a big hoopla on it. But their focus is the community. And that's what helps us to keep going like we are. I thank them, I respect them. You've made my daughter a better woman.
All right.
Because my daughter, I'm gonna put a little laundry out here. Until she was, she was a senior in high school, she was stealing sweatpants and T-shirts. And so when she went to Central Missouri State University and started looking at sororities and the queues and all of this, and her and her dad, man, her dad thought she was crazy because he was like, what is she doing? But you made a woman out of her. You made her understand why I do what I do. And so that's what helped her make the decision to be a Delta. So thank you, ladies, because I have a phenomenal daughter that really focuses, her heart is really on her sleeve because her focus is the community. And her focus is how she can help the community to the next level. So thank you all very much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
I'm sorry, having a long discussion with my friend from the 23rd. I just want to say, although I'm not part of the group, I really am. Half of the people in there are people I've known for a very long time, worked with my in-laws. I represent beautiful black ladies. I appreciate what you do and I want to just say congratulations again because you do this every year. And you get more beautiful every year, besides all the service that industry that you do. So I just wanted to thank you very much.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, you know what? I also want to say thanks. And what I like about the Deltas, there's always that meeting or group over across the hall and the questions are always tough. They're always holding people accountable. What are you doing about this? What are you doing? They hold us accountable. And I think that's what's cool about them. Over here, we're praising, and these guys are a great group, but they should go to the other side because that's where the tough questions are. Anyway, God bless you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, ladies. It's great to see you all. I see a lot of familiar faces, farmer colleagues, Doctor Doris Graham. Good to see you in such good health and hale and hearty. We're hanging in there. You're such a good model for, role model for all women. And, you know, as we know here at the Board of Aldermen, we are half of the Board now. So hang in there and continue the good work and being the role models for the women of the future. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 21st, I'm gonna help, Alderman from the 21st, John, Alderman from the 21st, I'm gonna help you out. Because I heard your name up here. I'm not gonna, I could just let it come. You may want, you may want to, you may want to say something.
Thank you, Mister President.
Behind me, they said, "That's right."
Fair enough. Thank you, Mister President. Ladies, it is an extreme pleasure to have you at the Board of Aldermen. Every year is an extreme pleasure. You guys do so much in our community. All the volunteer work you do, the community advocacy, and the continuously reaching out to younger women who are in college and in high school, all that makes a difference in our communities. And I am so proud to have you in the city of St. Louis. A lot of you are very active in the 21st Ward. I am proud of that as well. Have one of the best principals in the city. A young lady you guys just initiated in Doctor Leslie Bonner, who is the Principal at Yaman. She's doing a fantastic job. And she makes it known that her work comes from DTS. So thank you for all you do. You make the city of St. Louis better. Thank you so much.
I'd like to make sure I'm correct, politically correct in some things I say because it was personal. But DeJeanette Williams is President of St. Louis Alumni Chapter and Alumni Chapter. And also in her absence, I would like to recognize President Latasha Jenkins Jennings, I'm sorry. Latasha Jennings, which is President of St. Louis Metropolitan Chapter. I want to make sure I said all that right, out of respect. Thank you.
Well, I'm just gonna add my thanks and recognition and then turn it back over to the Alderwomen to wrap it up. And then I believe they're gonna have you speak. I just want, I am just so thankful, not just as the President of the Board of Aldermen, but as a father of four, for all the work that you all do throughout the community. You know, St. Louis city, just like any other city across America, we have, you know, a lot of challenges. And the thing that helps us to meet those challenges on a daily basis are organizations like the Deltas, specifically the Deltas out there working. People can choose to do many things with their time. Your time is the most valuable asset that you have because with that, you can get more money and everything else. But when you choose to invest your time in your community by volunteering, by working on neighborhood organizations, by going out doing street cleanups, by going out touching young kids and getting them back on the right track, that is an investment in our community that cannot be repaid. So on behalf of my family and friends, the rest of the members of the Board of Aldermen in the city of St. Louis and people who may not have an opportunity to thank you personally, I want to thank you for a job well done. I want to thank you for being an organization that has worked to change the fabric of not just the St. Louis community, but communities across this nation. This resolution is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So when they go back and they research the history of our city and they read about the rebirth of our city, 200 years from now, they will read about how the Deltas played a role in turning around St. Louis. So that we stop the population decline and see population coming back into the city. So that we see the Delmar divide diminished and the murder rate dropped in our city. That's what the Deltas are doing. So I want to thank you for that.
Now I will bring to the podium Madam Little Sister Almighty, President, that's inside. I'm sure her chapter knows who told me to say that. Miss DeJeanette Williams.
Thank you so much, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and to President Reed, and to all of the Aldermen and women here representing the city of St. Louis. We thank you for having us here today. Hi, Brandon. I had to say something to Alderman Bosley. He's a former Carlane student, where I probably should be working with my kids right now. But it was important that I be here today to bring you all greetings, to let you know that yes, we are here. I heard the gentleman say about, something about accountability. Yes, we are here to hold all of us accountable for what happens in the city of St. Louis. We want to be a partner with you in order to make this city a better city. We know what St. Louis is all about. We say we're from the Lou and we're proud. And we want to make sure that Delta Sigma Theta does their part to continue to make the Lou proud. We focus on educational development, economic development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and today, under our political umbrella, we are here. We are here. We are here. So we just wanted to stop by to let you know. We're watching you, you're watching us, and together we can make St. Louis better.
Step down here? Okay. We're going this way? Okay. He wants us to go this way. I guess so.
Let's give the Deltas a big round of applause. Thank you for all the work that they do. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. That will return our regular order of business. Introduction of Honored Guests. Any other introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? One more time, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, Mister President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Mister Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, Miss Sannetta Magnus, and her special guest Serena.
Any other introduction of honored guests? Any other, Alderman from the 14th?
I'd like to have as my honored guest Demetrius Alfred, President of Firefighters Local 73, Nathan Leath, and Captain, Captain from the, anyway, I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'd like to introduce him. And also, as a special honored guest, Michelle Martin Bonner, who is new as a liaison and works with the St. Louis Police Department to recruit highly qualified officers and retention. So she's a fellow, she's new. I just met her this morning and I think I look forward to great things working with her.
All right, thank you. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 18th.
Mister President and Board of Aldermen, all the people, I would like to introduce Mister Brown from the 18th Ward.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mister President. I would like to welcome our beautiful sheriff, a proud member of the 21st Ward, the Honorable Vernon Betts, and Miss Serena Wilson Griffin from the Circle Attorney's Office.
Any further, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Further introductions? We also, as we've seen earlier, we want to welcome the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta St. Louis Alumni Chapter. Let's welcome them. Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mister President. Members of the Board, we're gathered here on May 10th, the prelude to Mother's Day weekend. It was on this day in 1983 that the final episode of Laverne and Shirley aired, putting the Alderman from the 23rd into a state of depression for at least two years. But more importantly, this is National Lipid Day. So everyone go out and enjoy your favorite fat with no guilt today. Thank you very much.
Will do. Alderman, Alderman from the 22nd. Madam Clerk, approval of the minutes?
Approval of May 3rd, 2019 minutes.
Alderman 22nd.
Mister President, I move for approval of the minutes for May 3rd, 2019.
Been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Reporters, city officials.
Reporters, city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailbox.
Dispense with line items seven through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of an Intergovernmental Corporation Project Agreement Among the City, the City Foundry Transportation Development District and the City Foundry Community Improvement District, Prescribing the Form and Details of Said Agreement, Makes Certain Findings With Respect Thereunto, Authorizing Certain Other Actions of the City Officials and Containing a Severability Clause. Board Bill 36, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor and Comptroller to Execute Upon Receipt of and in Consideration of the Amount of $1,000 and Other Good and Valuable Consideration, A Quick Claim Deed to Remiss, Release, and Forever Quick Claim unto 6005 Westminster LLC Certain City-Owned Property Located in City Block 55423, Which Property Is Known By the Address of 6001 Through 5 Westminster Place. Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, An Ordinance Providing That in the Event That Any City of St. Louis Port District Is Expanded or Additional Port Districts Created in the City Pursuant to Section 68.015 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri, The Area or Any Portion thereof That Lies Within the Boundary Set Forth in Section 1 of this Ordinance Shall Be Excluded and Left Out of the Designated Area of Such Expanded or Newly Created Port District. Board Bill 38, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, An Ordinance Amending Section Number, An Ordinance Amending, Ordinance Number 69650 Relating to Phase 2 Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Cary Tiff, Inc., and Containing a Severability Clause. Board Bill 39, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and Alderwoman Davis, An Ordinance Amending, Ordinance 62220, Approved February the 6th, 1991, By Modifying the Terms of Real Estate Tax Abatement and Amending the Attached Redevelopment Plan By Adding Phase 4 To Be Completed by May 1st, 2029. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee.
Board Bill, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 36, to the HUDS Committee, Board Bill 35, 37, 38, and 39. That is the extent of reference of board bills.
Second reading.
Board Bill 9, sponsored by, Board Bill 9, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Green, and Alderwoman Ingracia. An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Director of Department of Health to Enter into and Execute an Agreement with the St. Louis University, St. Louis University College for Public Health and Social Justice as Part of Missouri Foundation for Health Grant to Fund an Academic Health Department Upon Approval of the Board of Estimate and Apportement and to Expand Funds by Entering to Contracts or Otherwise for the Grant Purpose and Containing Emergency Clause. The Following Bills Were Reported by Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 17, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, An Ordinance Submitting to the Qualified Voters residing in the Central West End, Southeast Special Business District as Established in Ordinance 63780, approved May 31st, 1996. Amended in Ordinance Number 64550, approved January 15th, 1991. approved January 15th, 1991, and amended in 1999, and amending in ordinance number 68236, approved January the 16th, 2009, a proposal to extend the levy of tax on the real property located in said district for an additional 10 years and increasing the amount of such tax to be an amount not exceed 85 cents per $100 assessed valuation, submitting said proposal to the voters of said district as a special election on August 6th, 2019, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 20, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, an ordinance repealing paragraph F of Section 2 of ordinance 63780, approved May 31st, 1996, as amended in ordinance 64550, approved January the 15th, 1999, and ordinance 68236, approved January the 16th, 2009. In lieu thereof, a new paragraph is enacted, extending the period of time during which the Central West Stand, Southeast Special Business District shall be permitted to collect the tax within boundaries of the district, and increasing the amount of such tax in amount not exceed 85 cents per $100 of assessed valuation of all real properties within such district, and to amend and restate the use for which the additional revenue produced by such tax may be put to, including land, landscape, cleaning landscaping, maintenance, security, public safety, purchase, installation of public infrastructure, public transportation administration, and contingency fund for which categories and containing effectiveness and emergency clauses. That is the extent of second reading of standing committees.
With dispensary line item 14 through 19. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 37, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed. The Board of Aldermen calls upon the honorable mayor to personally appear before the Board of Aldermen and verbally report on the current conditions of the city of St. Louis and provide policy proposals judged necessary and expedient to the addressed mayoral priorities for the 2019-2020 legislative year in a state of city address which shall be delivered no later than January the 5th, 2019, and held in the chamber of the Board of Aldermen.
July 5th?
I'm sorry, July 5th, 2019.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the first reading, Resolution Number 37.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of further discussion, a move that we send Resolution Number 37 to the Legislative Committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the 21st, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 37 to legislation.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
With dispensary line item 22, Miss Lane has unfinished business.
Tuesday, May 14th?
Miss Lane has unfinished?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have none.
Announcements?
Tuesday, May 14th, Ways and Means, 1:00 p.m. in the leisure room. They will be discussing Board Bill 24 and the city budget, the 2020 city budget hearing. Also, it's a Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting, 11:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. They will be discussing, no, I'm sorry, that's Wednesday, May 15th, it's the Transportation and Commerce Committee. They will be discussing Board Bills 3, 13, 28, and 29. Also, Wednesday, May 15th, Public Safety, we'll have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room. They will, it's an open discussion regarding the city's public safety issues. Ways and Means will be having a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room, discussing the 2020 city budget hearings. Thursday, May 16th, Ways and Means will be having a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room, discussing the 2020 city budget hearings. And Friday, May 17th, 2019, the full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to call an engrossment rules and regulations meeting, because we need to go over the correct way that we're supposed to engross bills, and go over several of the rules that I don't think we've been doing right. And it'll correct that mistake that we did before sending things out correctly. So, I've asked for some city councilor opinions on some things, and I'd like to meet with the rules committees to discuss that Wednesday at 10 o'clock in the leisure room, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any further, Alderman from the 6th?
Have a legislation committee hearing on May 16th at 2:00 p.m. to hear Board Bills 12 and 27 and Resolution 37.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to have as my honored guest, Ms. Michelle Price, who's my constituent and a Delta this morning.
Alderman from the 14th?
My memory has recovered. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Captain Ken Mitchell.
Welcome, Captain. Alderman from the 23rd?
FYI, we are gonna have a public safety meeting Wednesday at 1:00. And hopefully, that's late enough out there. Even though it's a committee of the public safety, I would invite any aldermen that would like to sit in to start to give an opinion. We're gonna work to try to deal with the jail. We're gonna work with shootings and how we go about working toward a resolution for these problems. So, even though it's a public safety committee, any alderman is certainly welcome to come in and also lend their thoughts. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 1st?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Clerk was appraising me that there is already a Ways and Means Committee at 10:00 o'clock. I try not to have conflicts in case people are on several things. Maybe we could move it back to 11:12, what, 11:30? The Engrossment and Rules Committee to 11:30. That way, we won't conflict if anybody's on more than one committee.
Restate the date and everything.
The date is, what is, whatever, Wednesday the 15th?
Wednesday the 15th, 11:30.
15th of May at 11:30.
15th of May, 11:30. Thank you, thank you, Alderwoman.
And also, I would like to reach out and say to one of my favorite constituents, and I have a lot of favorites, this is a really special one. My special guest is Joyce Kirk, who lives in the 5200 block of Northland, and has been my constituent for 20 some odd years.
Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I did not recognize 21st Ward resident, the former state representative, and also a member of Delta Sigma Theta Swardy Incorporated, the Honorable Amber Boykins.
Alderman from the 26th?
Mr. President, I also have two additional special guests. They are Serena Wilson Griffin, the first assistant in the Circuit Attorney's Office in the city of St. Louis, and Michael Warwick, Chief of Staff for the City of St., Circuit Attorney's Office for the city of St. Louis. And immediately following the meeting today, they'll be in the leisure room. They would like to introduce themselves to all the members of the Board of Aldermen.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd?
So, the alderman from the Hill told me that his meeting's gonna go till 2:30. So, let's move the public safety meeting up that Wednesday. Instead of 1, let's make it 2:30, and I'll also let the clerk know to change that if he would, please. 2:30 on Wednesday.
Madam Clerk, please note that.
So noted.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from, Alderman from the 8th?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to invite everyone out to South Grand on Thursday evening. We have the South Grand International Dine Around, and for a small fee, you get tickets, and you can take them to a number of restaurants down on South Grand. Try different dishes from, from all of our restaurants. We have more countries represented in the South Grand Strip than Epcot does in Florida. So, please come out, try some great things on South Grand. We also have the first Food Truck Friday is tonight in Tower Grove Park. And the Ritz Park is watching The Incredibles Saturday night, I believe, down on South Grand as well. So, we got a lot going on down in our area. Please come on. And if the weather is nice, we'd love to see you outside. Thanks.
I'd like to, before we, before we move further, really just wish all the mothers happy Mother's Day. Please enjoy your Mother's Day. Alderman from the 13th?
Thank you, sir. President, members of the Board, I would like to invite everybody to Crownlet Park tonight by the boathouse at 6 o'clock, from 6:00 to 7:30. Shakespeare troupe, Stone Soup, is going to perform Twelfth Night in a, like a light sort of way. So, and bring your own stuff. But Crownlet Park, 6 o'clock, by the boathouse. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to move to excuse the Alderwoman from the 19th and the Alderman from the 4th due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, I maintain the second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to move to adjourn until next Friday, May 19th at 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.